So, you know, we, oh, that's how you do this.
Yeah.
To get some folks.
Yeah, there are COA.
Selectmen or.
The COA, is this there?
Yeah, good.
Oh, my goodness.
Sorry.
COA, yeah.
Is it okay if this is videotaped? Yes, no, we're working with the COA to help us to sort of troubleshoot it and see the ease of use and see if there's a better way. There's always gonna be a better way, it's not gonna be perfect, but what we were looking for is transition of the platform and the content, and that's really what we've got with the best that we can do for our design, given the limited resources we have, but I think I'm really thrilled with the amount of progress we've made in a short time. So, I just wanted to thank Sue for all of her hard work. She's been enormously helpful in getting us to this point. So, thank you, Sue.
Thank you.
Thank you, that's really helpful. Looks great.
Well, we wanted to.
We should have the picture of the chair and the selectman on the front.
We should, we should.
That's just what we need. Without doubt, the least photogenic.
We have that with Dr. We've got a picture.
You know Dr.
Yeah.
Got a picture of me with my dog.
Oh, we got a picture of Bonnie with her bicycle.
Okay, let's move on. Item number two is review the draft financial policies and the Collins Center Financial Management.
I assume this is where the book comes into play.
Yes, yeah. Everybody can take a look. Sue, there's, that might be missing, look at tab number three to make sure it's in there. I just added some new material behind tab three.
Is it stuck in the picture?
Yep, you have it. You guys have it, I'm just not sure. Sue has it.
She does not have it.
I'll make sure we add it to this one.
Okay, I have them. Could you pass me? So, I keep this handy, this will be your new best for income budget season, this is your budget binder. So, we thought that this would be a good opportunity rather than to send you a bunch of electronic documents. Some exist in electronic form and some don't. But what we had hoped to do was by providing a binder to you that you can maybe use this as sort of a central information source as we go through the budget process. The post-budget analysis was a document under tab one that we had developed, the finance team had developed with, we have one extra book if someone from the audience wants to look on. This was really sort of a point in which the finance team got together and tried to see what were some things that we could do to make the process a little smoother moving forward. The process is never perfect, we have a lot of unknowns, a lot of unanticipated new projects. We have the Donnie Bristol Farm, we have the MSBA projects. We, at the same time, we're also doing a lot with our financial policies and the capital planning process. So, all we did is really, we just took, we did a brainstorming, we took all of our ideas and put them on paper. There were some suggestions that we, or challenges that we outlined, that we'd like to try to get a leg up on this year, and by giving you this book, we're hoping to start that. So, what we talked about really was some, getting an earlier start on the process, and by that, I think there's materials in here that will help us or guide us along the way. Like behind tab two, I put last year's schedule, which we've already gotten a lot of feedback from. One of our things that we'd like to do this year is to kind of segregate the process, meaning the budget process, into three different tracks. I think Mark might have made a suggestion, and we think that it would work out well. The three different tracks could be this, one is our capital planning process, the operational process, the operations budget process, which is mostly with the FINCOM, and then the other track being the warrant production process. So, what I'm going to be doing in the next week or so is I will be looking at this list and trying to break down so that we have three tracks, if you will. A lot of them overlap, as you know, but I'll be looking at this old schedule and be working with that to try and basically put dates and responsibilities or boards with each. And then the second page of this is really just our old list of articles, just to give you a sense of what documents or, you know, what the warrant looked like last year compared to what it might be this year. Behind track three, again, that's just a reference point. Three, what I've done for reference point is I've put in, there's a few different things here. Basically, it's the warrant from last year. The first thing I've given you is an outline of the table of contents, and I've segregated them based on our budget process capital and then items that really are related to the budget process. So, this is our budget book, even though we want to keep the warrant process separate, it's important that we understand the connectivity between all of the different tracks. So, even though the warrant as a document is a separate process to put that all together, which this year represented over forty, over forty different articles, it's a lot, there are a lot of moving parts. And in order to best manage that this year, what we thought we could do to start out with is, first of all, to provide all of you with a reference point. This is what we had last year. It must have gone through so many different, you know, version control became an issue because at some point when you have so many chefs in the kitchen, you wonder what the original recipe looked like, and you wonder what it's gonna taste like by the end because you're running out of time and you've gotta get dinner served. So, what we're trying to do this year is to manage the things that we can manage, which is, here's the warrant that we've been using as a template every year. I've scrubbed this down, I haven't given that to you yet, but I've scrubbed it down, taken out all the numbers for last year, and so we'll be ready to go when we're, as we move forward through the process. What I've also, so that the front page that I gave you with the table of contents is really just an overview of what I felt were the budget-related articles. So, some of those might just be a matter of taking the warrant, and I've also included for you one page for each one of the warrant articles that has to do with the budget process. Of course, Article second is our transfers, Article third, the general operating budget. All of those are in depth. So, what I was trying to do basically is compartmentalize all of these so that we can fit them together and understand how they all need to work together. There are some warrant articles that I can write today, right now, and say, okay, these are ready to go. Now, when people asked last year, when I said, oh, we're gonna get a draft of the warrant, people said, before I even had a draft of the warrant, well, I'd like to request a copy of the warrant. And I was like, well, the warrant isn't available yet. The warrant is a document that includes forty-one different warrant articles, and includes a process and a policy and a budget process that needs to take place. But I see this as the written document that really is effectively the legal document to post our meeting that has to be posted within fourteen days of special town meeting and seven days of an annual town meeting. This is the easy part, is writing this. The difficult part is making sure that all of the decisions and the various boards are being made and that we're tracking those appropriately. So, I'm giving all of you last year's warrant as a guide, and I'm giving you every single one of these warrant articles that has anything to do with the budget as a reference point. And as we finish various pieces, we will update those, and then hopefully we'll have a much more manageable or at least visual process in mind when, by the time we're going to produce the warrant. I've included a copy of the attachment A, which of course is the town meeting voted budget, and those are the pieces that sometimes aren't, you know, this attachment A is one of the last pieces of the puzzle. This is in the back of the warrant document. So, again, I'm just putting all of this information in here so that we have a source of reference as we move forward. Behind tab four.
So, just on the warrant, we've actually, obviously, we've been doing warrants for many years, and they certainly got much better once we got to having computers as a source of entering them and managing them. And the tools within computers have gotten better over the years. We actually have honed that process down, I think reasonably well with the version controls and the ability to use the tools to bring in changes automatically. But one of the things, for example, that you wanna start out with first is a strong template of the warrant that can have things added, but it's a clean template in the sense that it has only the kind of structures that you want to have in one, but you find out over time, things can get stuffed in there. But typically, in more recent years, what we did is we actually did create a clean template, and from there, we're able to add and make changes to it. And also using the right styles makes it easy to control those things, once it's built, to paginate it, to check it out, whatever. So, my suggestion is we make sure that we do the best we can to take advantage of today's technologies with Word, for example, to make that document easy to control and get it correct and be able to fix it even at the last minute without a challenge.
Agreed. On tab four is comprehensive financial management policies for the town of Topsfield, a draft that will be discussed more in depth at Monday's meeting. The Collins Center will be there to answer any questions you have, I want to provide you with the draft. Now, this is a draft that is based on best practices of policies and guidelines. It does not have to be Topsfield's official voted policy, but we need to sort of get the process started, which is why I'm including it here for all of you for your review, so that we have a frame of reference moving forward. These policies we want to be, they don't have to be voted before we go to S and P. However, we need to, we want to be able to say that we've got a draft, we're working with it to develop policies that are specific and unique to the town of Topsfield. Some of the policies might, you know, I think that a lot of them need to be looked at and understood from our frame of reference. We need to take Topsfield's number and place them in there, for instance, if we're talking about stabilization fund or level of reserves. What I would point to be recommending that we would do with this is at this point is perhaps setting up a special work task group, which would involve a member of the Board of Selectmen, the Chair of the FINCOM, a member of the FINCOM, and myself, the Town Accountant and the Town Treasurer, so that we could have some meetings to go through these in a more detailed manner and work with the respective groups to come up with a draft that could be then further discussed during the public meeting of the bodies. I'm certainly open for suggestions, but the question is, how do we best implement this or look at this and get it to a point where we can say we have policies or guidelines in place that we want to make our best effort to either follow or to use as guidelines or as a blueprint? The other tricky part, of course, is the difference of various budget authority with the FINCOM, with the financial management team. So, all of those are items that a lot of communities have to take time to develop. It doesn't have to be something that's done overnight, a lot of times it takes quite some time to work those through. So, this is really just intended to be the starting point of a larger discussion and dialogue.
So, the real driver, apparently, we need to do it, but the real driver is standard and pours for the purpose of going out and getting a bond rating for the bonding that we're going to be doing?
No, we wanna have financial policies in place as a tool for the bodies to make decisions and to allow us so that, you know, ten years or five years or one year from now, to make sure that we have some guidelines that have been thought through and decided and voted on as group, as a policy matter, so that they're sort of, they're in writing and they've been established. Now, they can change depending on the board or the FINCOM and how they wanna move, you know, how they want to change or adapt these. So, this is really just a blueprint that we can follow, and then we can throw them away and never use them again. But we do know that if we wanna maintain an excellent bond rating and we want to get the best financing rates for our permanent bond structure, we need to have the best rating that we can so that we can save money on borrowing costs. And a key part of their criteria is that a community is, has and is continuing to uphold written financial policies that help guide their decision-making. Doesn't put you in a straitjacket, it just says, in a perfect world, if there's no issues, these are the guidelines we'd like to follow, and this board agrees and that board agrees, and the staff have direction based on what those boards are gonna vote. So, rather than start and say, well, I don't know how much money, you know, the Town Accountant wants to put in the, in next year's proposed budget to start us off on the discussion about OPEB. So, rather than have her say, well, is this, what's the right number? We might start with a number that was put into the policies that would then be worked through the FINCOM and, you know, and would be discussed with Board of Selectmen well before we're finalizing the warrant. Right? So, there are some things we can decide, and you don't wanna be in the thick of the budget cycle when you're making a decision, when you're trying to deal with, okay, do we, you know, wanna have a larger, you know, fewer teachers, or do we wanna put more money in OPEB? That's not the time, you don't wanna be deciding that at the last minute, right before we're going to warrant. What we're trying to do is help to make some of those decisions earlier on in the process so that come the warrant production time, we can focus on the editing of the warrant document and not making policy decisions at that point in time. So, that's really why we wanna have those in place. The S and P was really just another reminder that, you know, we have to get this done if we wanna get a favorable rating.
To get a better.
Yes, we already have a favorable.
We already have a favorable.
We are gonna try to get.
Try to get a better.
Yes.
Better rating.
Right. So, that's.
But we also, because we've gone to S and P in the past, and since then, I think, we've actually added to some of our policies, reference to the finance, so we have those in place already. What you're trying to say is that we want to augment those into this kind of a document?
Yeah.
But we have those, so.
And this document kinda formalizes.
We wanna be ready, we wanna be ready, we wanna be ready for S and P, which is essentially about a month and a half, month and a half from now.
End of October?
Yeah, might even be the beginning or middle, the beginning of October.
Month, month and a half, so what we ought to be doing, just as a thought, instead of trying to deal with this, which I've been into it some, and I think we all have, there's a lot of stuff to do here, is, and maybe in parallel, but especially importantly, is to make sure that we have all of our existing stuff available for when we get on the phone with S and P.
But, yes, but that's what's in here. To the extent possible, they reviewed all of those, they collected all of the.
It's a collection.
Okay, okay.
It should be in here.
This is a study done by them that says, here's some of the stuff you guys have got.
Right.
Is this gonna be part of their presentation?
Yes, absolutely, this is the core part of their presentation. And these other two pieces, so behind tab five is, of course, the capital improvement plan. That is one of the policies, is that you should have a five-year capital improvement plan. So, I see this as a starting point for our budget process, I'll be going through this in more detail. I'll be putting together a discussion and be talking with the FINCOM and, of course, with the board about how we can, if it's possible, to get a capital plan together earlier on in the process. That way, we would be able to maybe draft some of those warrant articles ahead of time, and still allows us some flexibility to get through the process so that once we get beyond the capital plan, then we can focus on operational budgets. So, here's our capital plan, and you can ask some questions about that. I think that.
Could I just go back to this for a moment, in the sense that they took our stuff? I see a lot of what's in here as kind of a standard format that they use. For example, I have not been tuned, it hasn't been drawn from Topsfield in the sense that, for example, they reference the CPA, Community Preservation Act, as one of the things in one of their references here, which we do not have.
Right.
So, it's not bad that the fact that they have a standard that they try to make available to multiple towns. But my comment is, it feels a little bit more like a standard template versus our template. So, we can say that maybe they went through some of our stuff, but I would be careful about submitting this as it is.
We're not submitting this.
I know, that's not the point at all. I think this provides us an outline of how we ought to proceed with getting our own stuff in a document like this.
In the meantime, we need to have our stuff together.
Of course, this is pretty. But that's one of the reasons for doing this, because we don't have it all together, it's scattered all over the place.
I've read this several times very carefully, given some of my thoughts to Kelly specifically. I've also touched base with Karen Dowd, I believe the chairman of the state, or someone else recently, of the FINCOM, just to make sure that from a global perspective, we're on the same wavelength, we really were many decisions we've struggled with for decades. So, not to the exclusion of anyone, but if we need a member on the task force, that I do want to do.
And I assume you'll accept comments from all of us that you keep them.
Okay.
I won't get to that point.
Just so I can, so I can set your expectations, I don't wanna give you the impression that S and P is gonna be looking for signed, sealed, delivered, approved document. I've had a discussion with the Collins Center about the fact that we want this to be, we need to make this uniquely Topsfield, and that, and they've reassured us that it, that is exactly what S and P wants to hear, is that we have drafts, we've been working with the Collins Center, we have drafts, we've established a working group task force to go through them, and that we are following a process. They're not expecting that we say, yeah, they've been approved and we're all set. They wanna know that we are actively working to make this our own, and that we're working with our consultants or that we have worked with them to get it to a point where we can have a productive dialogue and a really substantive conversation so that we can adopt these and make them sustainable and user-friendly for the town of Topsfield.
These kind of documents, in my opinion, go a long way towards showing any lending institution, any bond rating institution, that your financial house is in order. That's really what we're all about here, trying to make sure that this stuff has been thought through, and this is where the town stands.
So, capital improvement plan, we're gonna start, I see this as sort of one of the, so, right now, in terms of, this is a behind tab five, this is something you've already seen before, but I'm just putting it in the book so that everybody doesn't have to be, you know, fiddling through their files. It's in here. I will be taking from this the information that I need, they did a good job in consolidating and meeting with all the individual groups. I have some thoughts about how I can make this a little bit more structured based on the previous model that I was using two years ago, where we had like an overview sheet for each department, and so I think that I could easily do that and manage that for the FY nineteen budget process. So, that's one of the tasks that I'll be doing in the coming weeks, is getting that to a point that I can give it to the Board of Selectmen for your review and your questions, and then we can start that dialogue and get that piece sort of underway or in place until, you know, so that we can then refocus back to operational budgets in departments. So, that's my hope with that document, but I certainly don't see this as sort of the final version. Like, it's, there's a lot of great information in here, some big picture stuff, but I also think that I need to sort of take it and synthesize it so that we can get it back down to our level with regard to our particular needs in our departments. Finally, the tool that's in here, and I've included it here, this is a document, a financial forecast. It basically outlines numbers, but these numbers have to be updated, and so that's gonna take a little bit more time. But I think that there are some key tools that we can use behind tab six. I have all of the worksheets, we'll be working with my financial management team to update the worksheets, and also Tony Terese, who was our, who was our consultant through the Collins Center. Even though their contract is finished, informally, I have a very good rapport with him that if I have a question or an issue or concern, he's very easily accessible. I used to work with him in Belmont, and he has agreed that, you know, anytime if we need some assistance with this, he's happy to work with us, even though he won't be, you know, the consultant from Collins Center, but he's always willing to help us out if we need it, to bring those numbers up to date. I foresee the forecasting tool to be really sort of a starting point for the financial management team, plug in numbers, to look at them, to evaluate them, and to make recommendations in, just general, some general recommendations to both, you know, the Board of Selectmen, but also the finance committee, because we do this anyway informally, in terms of saying, okay, we think, this is what we think about revenue, this is what we think about state aid, this is how we think it might, you know, we don't have crystal balls, so we don't know exactly what's gonna happen, but what this tool will help us to do is to plug in the things that we do know, and to see if there are some assumptions that can be made as we move forward through the process so that we're not making any missteps. And so, I see this as sort of a tool that our financial management team would use in working with the FINCOM, just like what we've used the model for. So, this might be another way for me as town administrator to sort of keep track of, you know, new information and sort of a database of, you know, what we currently have and what we project to be in the future. So, this is really just a tool, I see this as an internal tool that won't necessarily be something that's distributed, but is more of a working tool for the management team, to be able to make some assumptions and recommendations about the financial picture of the town and how we see that all sort of fitting into our budget process. So, that's the final piece of this book that I've included, but there's a number of other tasks that I've left with nothing. I'm sure we'll be filling in some of those with some other information, but I wanted to just provide you a tool that we can use moving forward, so you can call this, you know, your budget book. We're also putting them together for the members of the FINCOM, and we'll distribute those to them on Monday. Again, just so that we have it all under one cover, and we have one place that we can look for this information as we go through the process. Is there any other questions?
Great to have it together, but I think it'd also be helpful to ensure that what we have here is electronic. I think it's much easier for most of us.
Oh, yeah.
To deal with things that are electronic.
Yeah.
And so, for example, in that regard, if we get an electronic copy of last year's warrant, you made an initial try and work with that, if we could get any of those things electronic.
Yeah, yeah.
Saves, or easier to carry around.
Yeah, we have everything electronically, so we can just send it to you. Well, we probably have to send it out in pieces because there's a lot of information for one, for one email, but we can do that.
And Billy, when that comes out, I guess, obviously, I should direct this to, it's really helpful if, if you can put it all in one, so we kind of, 'cause I create a folder every time you send stuff that's related. It'd be nice if I had a budget book folder.
Yeah.
So, as long as I know that when you're sending something, it's supposed to be put in that, that'll be great.
Good idea.
But now, you know, continuing with some of this and what we're trying to do. I have some questions about what the formats, for example, will be for our budgets this year. We used to have Excel, Excel forms, then we had electronic paper, and I think they were a little different last year. Are we trying to get back to electronic documents? Because it makes a lot of difference for what people can work with and analyze, and also the ability to control it, version control, for example, and I know there was a lot of, from a distance, it seemed to me, there was a lot of machinations about which budget was up or not. Are there any plans to improve, change what we had in the last two or three years?
Well, two years ago, we went to a paper-based, MUNIS budget worksheet that people would submit to us because that was the transition between town accountants. Last year, we went back, the town accountant was able to go back to the Excel spreadsheets, and that's really the Excel spreadsheets is the way that we intend to go this year.
Could I ask, I did see the data that was on it. One of the things that was particularly helpful in past years, and I think it was also for the FINCOM, was that we had a number of columns of past actuals, for example, about five years back. It was actually more than that, if you opened up the spreadsheet all the way. But having actuals, and you can see several actuals in a row, and then a budget, and then the new budget, so to speak, is very helpful.
I think we did three, I think we did.
And just like, maybe to not make too many changes, then just add one more column without dropping off the previous actual and.
I will, I'll make that suggestion to the town accountant, however, she has a very good model that I'd hate to take her with. What we do have, though, is if someone is interested in looking at prior budget years, we can certainly provide that to them, but our budget worksheets need to be very concise and straightforward, and five years of historic data isn't necessarily.
Kevin, if we're doing it in Excel, I agree with David that if it's just a matter of, just don't take off the old when you add a new column, number one, number two, and hide those columns.
Right.
We can unhide them anytime, but that way, when the question comes up, you can unhide, expose it, take a look at it, and then pop it back down.
Yeah.
I agree, that would be helpful because sometimes those questions do arise.
Right.
It's a nice way to painlessly add one year at a time, of course, Excel will let you put in many columns, yours as you want.
And when we distribute them, can we distribute them then as Excel files? That helps us manipulate them, it's got all the formulas behind it, so if there's any questions, we know how they're being worked out?
I'll have to think about that. You know, it's intentionally not something we want people to manipulate. Excel spreadsheets, you know, the department head submits them, we have to consolidate them. We get into version control issues. To the extent possible, without sounding like I'm not trying to be obstinate, however. To the extent possible, without sounding like I'm not trying to be obstinate, however, with regard to version control and data manipulation, we don't want to get into a situation where an Excel spreadsheet can be manipulated in different ways and somebody could, not saying that that would be the intent. However, you know, we're willing, you have a very dedicated, committed, intelligent financial management team, you have a FINCOM that has the authority to decide these detailed, very complex questions, and I'd hate to think that because we're providing an Excel spreadsheet to one member of one board, then it then becomes the public record that needs to be distributed to everyone else under public record law. So I just say that as a consideration that we want to be very careful about who gets what, access to what records, it's all public information, however.
Kelly, I think there's another question embedded in that. Yes, I agree, dissemination of a work in progress when people are modeling ideas that they may not, they may know aren't going to end up being right when they kind of try things out.
Yeah.
Is part of the process of doing it, and I understand that totally. But if there are key, if you will, sort of home worksheets that represent the current version, I think you can essentially allow people to see everything that's in it, they just can't make changes.
Oh, right, right.
Password protected.
Yeah.
Right.
And if people can't make changes, then you could look and see how it was derived, but you can't change the numbers.
There's no question it's important that people be able to see what the document is and what it looks like.
Absolutely.
But password protected eliminates version control issues and those kinds of...
Whatever.
Well, I just, I just, I'm trying to manage, you know, we've spent a lot of effort dealing with version control in the past, and I want to avoid that, and I want to do that in all honesty. I want to do that for everyone's benefit because if we, if somebody's, it's just, I've seen it turn into a big mess, and I think we have a very good, transparent, open process. And, you know, I understand that information is public, however, there are certain tools that we need to be able to utilize as a team, and most of them are even public records. When we're working on a spreadsheet, it doesn't become public until we give it to the board.
No, that's not true.
It's, I'm not, I'm just suggesting that maybe this is worth, I'm happy to consider it, I'm just trying to explain to you what I believe to be the most efficient, effective budget process, given the fact that this is a very complex process that has many moving parts. And if we have to begin to start issuing public records requests for every Excel spreadsheet we work on, we're not going to have time to have good process. I just want the board to be aware that those are the considerations. We have limited staff resources, and I cannot be dedicating more and more time to be producing records that are really just work products. I just need the board to understand that I'm not trying to be difficult or non-transparent, it's just that we have to be able to draw the line somewhere so that we can get our work done.
Yeah, I think if only we can publish some of this stuff online, it would be great. I think that would, and in part, I think that's kind of like your question. Could I just ask, Kelly, when you talked about the budgets, you said we need to consolidate them. I'm trying to understand, what does consolidation actually mean? Does that mean putting it all in one file, or do we still maintain separate files for each budget or something like that?
Oh, of course, of course. Yeah. When I say consolidate, I mean, every time you ask for a budget, I'm not going to give you a 50-page budget. We have a roll-up system, we, you know, where all of the budgets roll...
So consolidated is to have it all in one place?
Right.
But as separate documents, separate files, if you will.
Yeah, we, yeah, we...
I just don't, just I understand, yeah. Is that right?
Well, yeah, that's how Excel works.
Okay, right. And so then, we might be able to put those up on the website for, as they, as they get approved by the FINCOM or something like that, well, first of all, by the Board of Selectmen.
The FINCOM does do that, correct? They do do that.
Yeah, we've done that for a long time.
They do.
Yes, but it was consolidated, it was put into one mass file. Sometimes if we put it up online as separate ones, it might be easier for people, but that's somewhat the details, but I think, I think it would be interesting for the public to be able to see it that way, instead of just this one, you have the page through. I remember over the years, people had some complaints about how we had to go through the traffic, which is this and which is that. If we simply put up each of the departments, it might be just as easy.
Kelly, are these documents from the Collins Center? Oh, sorry. Any other comments, questions, or on the form?
I guess the one question, yeah, are these online?
I just had availability, these are quite detailed. I just wondered if they were going to be up electronically so we could, you know, look at them, read them before next Monday's meeting? There's an awful lot in there.
Yes, and they already are through the chair.
Are they printed out, right?
There, two of them are, we haven't published the financial policy set. I asked them to hold back until they did the meeting on Monday, but I do have an electronic format and be happy to provide it to you.
What should I do, just come in and...
Yeah, no, I can, why don't you just write down your email?
Sure.
I guess, maybe it's, they do obviously this draft for a reason. I mean, these are my questions to the public, but I really is careful, and I have no doubt that it will evolve significantly from this draft.
Absolutely.
I just don't want them to be just...
No, these are best practices from, I mean, every place, you know, and...
From a lot of the towns that they deal with.
Yeah, this is a lot of this formulated.
And it's a challenge because in looking through there, in a sense, they tried to fit some of it into what we actually do.
Right.
And that can make it look like this has already been fit to us, when in fact, all that's been done is, the cutouts are standardized for the pieces we use, but not to the size.
Exactly.
It's to give us some ideas of the things to think of.
My first call on Kelly, my first call on Kelly on the subject was from the floor after I had fallen on my chair.
It's okay. Take a deep breath, get back on your chair, it's okay.
You done with that, Kelly? Okay, any other comments or questions?
Since you're working on the timeline, I think it's somewhat of our discussion here. In the past, sometimes we've had forums or input sessions with Citizens United. Do we want to try to have something of that nature again this time? I don't think we had it last year, maybe the year before. And if so, it's important to have, if we kind of think of it, that it's at least has a place hold on the timeline, if not just about when it would be done in the time wanting. This is where the budgets are essentially worked out, give people a chance to have a quick presentation on those things, so to speak, and importantly, ask questions. Sometimes you get five people, sometimes you get 20 people, whatever, but it's an opportunity. As we always say, people come town meeting and they ask questions, there's another opportunity for them to ask questions.
I don't have any real problem philosophically with that idea, unless, I'd like to see how the process proceeds and see if we can work in the opportunity for the public.
Would have been tough this year, from what I understood, you got us the schedule copy compressed, and when you actually scheduled...
So we're going to fix it, as Ford said, we're going to fix that right now.
But that would be either a FINCOM or joint with the FINCOM, it's going to work on this schedule.
Yeah, yes, but in order of magnitude, it's something that we consider, again.
Something, okay.
Yeah, that's a policy decision, and we can work that into the calendar.
Yeah, so even if we don't have a date, just have it following forward.
I'll follow your lead if, whenever, however you want to do it.
It's fine. Yep, we need to that point. Okay, then I will vote to close the open session and vote to go into executive session to discuss fire chief contract, police chief contract, and the union personnel.
Second.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Go.
John?
Hi.
Yes.
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 Great, thanks.
Sure.
I couldn't read those documents, I heard references...
On the D O one, the partner of revenue.
Oh, they're not...